Okay, good evening, everyone. I want to apologize in advance. I may have to leave, but hopefully I'll make it through all meetings. Okay, do we have any public participation this evening?
Yeah.
Mr. Tinker.
How are we doing? I guess I had a question about, uh... Well, last year I was here and I was like... Tried to get the older, uh... Younger kids to be able to play, uh... Playing high basketball, Pee-wee basketball as well. I feel like I ended up losing my job over it. Uh, that's a different story, but, um... We now... I... I said at the time that we wouldn't have the numbers to do things the way we're doing them. And now have, uh... Now they're requiring this year, from what I understand, they're gonna require the sixth graders to play out. And I wanted to do that last year. It was a terrible idea, um... They had all these reasons and safety issues and... And now this year, sixth graders have to play out. I understand and, uh... I'm gonna be able to play both. I don't understand why we're just not letting these kids play sports. If they wanna play, just let 'em play. There's ten games in one league, there's twelve games in the other. This saying is too much, it's too much, it's just for your... Let the parents decide what is too much. I've... I, uh... I talked with the Pee-wee, the Pee-wee Boys, uh... Pee-wee Girls coach the other day. Last time I talked with the Pee-wee, Pee-wee Girls coach, they told me that someone stood up here and said I was bullying them. I'm friends with the Pee-wee, with this coach. We hunt, we fish, we ice fish. We sit at McFadden's every morning and chit-chat. He flowers my driveway, we're friends. I'm not bullying the coach. We're friends. He tells me he has four girls this year for the Pee-wee Girls team. He'd like to have the sixth graders, but they're not allowing him. And then when he goes to talk to them, they tell him that the school board voted that they couldn't play. I don't believe that's true, is it?
I don't believe so.
Well, this is what he's being told. I have the message from him right here. If anyone wishes to see it, this isn't something I'm dreaming up. I'm not, you know, smoking and having a fight dream or anything, but this is what... They changed the rules so the kids can't play and then they blame somebody else. And I don't understand it. How did we get from... I mean, it just, it changes continuously. I don't understand it. Last year, I was a bad guy 'cause I wanted to let the young kids play, 'cause we only had seven kids. I said, "Let, let us have the younger kids, let 'em play Pee-wee and junior high." Oh, no, I was a bad guy. Now, this year, they're gonna take the younger kids and they're not gonna let 'em play down, they're gonna force 'em to play out. You know, why are we forcing kids to do anything? Let's let 'em play. Let's let 'em play Pee-wee and junior high if they wanna. That's what the handbook says, it's clear, it's in black and white. It says five through eight is junior high. And it says three through six is Pee-wee. That means fifth and sixth graders can play either way. That's what it says, it's in black and white. And I don't understand why we keep having to go over this and over this and over this. Why we keep spending all this time, like, we're gonna go over the handbook tonight, this stuff going on or whatever, and having the school board approve the handbook, and they just change it whenever they want, they just change it. It says in there that they can change the handbook with the approval of the school board.
Right, that, that is correct. Any changes have to be made by the school board itself.
So, we need to obey the handbook, I think. You know, you ask the kids to obey the rules, and if they don't, they're in trouble. Why are the parents and the teachers and the leaders not obeying the rules? I don't understand it. It drives me more crazy, I would say, not crazy.
We don't have the athletic director here tonight to comment on what's going on with that. Do you know anything about that?
I have a write-up from her, I was just saving it till it ends up on the agenda.
Okay.
Can I ask a couple questions while I'm there?
Go right ahead.
Um, and this is to, and Sean or Tracy. I mean, when I went to school, we had two teams. We had a junior high team and a Pee-wee team. Now, we have how many, three, four, four, five?
Three.
Three? Attack, travel team?
Total of six basketball teams, boys and girls.
So, three each?
Yes.
So, travel team and then Ju- Pee-wee and then junior high?
I believe that one of the school board members has been told that we're in the process of changing leagues, but when they say changing leagues, that doesn't mean changing leagues, that means getting rid of a league. That's what that means. So, I mean, just call us, pay us, pay us.
Look, look, look your way and finish.
Well, no, I, I just wa... When I went to school, it was six, seventh, and eighth. That was six, sixth, seventh, and eighth, there was no fifth. Now, when they brought fifth up, is that because there was not enough kids, is that why? Okay, and that's still the reason there's not enough kids to fill... To fill your teams?
Right. Last year, they allowed me only seven and eight, and I had seven girls. That's not enough to practice. I mean, we pulled it off, we did it, but it's really not enough.
Well, I, I mean, I'm just going by Elena. Elena, in, in college, played four years with seven girls.
Yep.
You know, the Clippers, and they did well. They went to, you know, they, they, um... Went, went to Pennsylvania and they did well with seven girls, but, you know, that's not always the case.
It's hard to teach. You've gotta have an offense and a defense. In order to teach someone to play defense, they gotta have an offense. In order to teach someone to play offense, there's gotta be a defense. You know, it's kind of, it's hard to teach at this level. College kids is, is different, they already know, they have the skill level that is much higher.
I wanna let them play too, but I do think that twenty-two games is a lot. I really, I really think twenty-two games is a lot.
From November to April?
Huh?
From November to April?
Yeah, it's spread out, it's not...
It's not, not all clocked into one?
All starts, start in November and it ends in April.
And the league you have starting in November actually ends...
Is only...
It's almost over now.
Yeah, and then they get a break.
Uh, multiple other schools in this league, so...
What are, what are, what are these, what are these schools do? Do they play five through eight, junior high?
I called, uh... I'll tell you, Joanne, I talked to, uh, Debbie last week. And I had the same thought. Now, let's say the West, White is the West, and, you know, then East is the other end, which, that's where we play soccer. Well, on that side, Debbie said they don't have the Pee-wee. They have the junior high, but they don't have the Pee-wee. So, our kids have to play with Machias, uh, Jonesboro, and all those games, all those teams. And then junior high's playing Eastport, Perry, Pembroke. And next year, Debbie said that the East side, they're gonna have Pee-wee, where our kids have to play, you know, that's where they play. But I talked to somebody, Joanne, down in, uh, Harrington. And she said that, uh, for those teams on there, they play just like we do, three to six, uh, on their Pee-wee. And all of them, uh, play up or down. Like, if you, like, I and Tyler, let first graders play on Pee-wee. If we need, needed the kids to make a team, they dropped up or dropped down. And it should so, right here. It's not something we're making up, it's right here in the handbook.
And it's true.
But it's just, we don't have enough kids and they're all facing that, all the schools almost are facing that.
We're gonna talk about the handbook in a little bit.
Now, yeah, I have a question about why, for the last, at least three years, this has been a topic. I mean, why can't it just be straightened out? This is how it is. Tough. I mean, who keeps changing and not abiding the handbook?
That, I...
Somebody is.
You know, we, well, my feeling is we need to go buy the handbook, and we're no different than any other school. Uh, you know, they, they all have to do this.
I find the handbook is used mostly to one's advantage and thrown out the window to someone else's advantage.
I will say in Harrington, I talked to somebody in that school, they do four to six for Pee-wee. Uh, but we just need to, we need to go buy the handbook. We just need to go buy it, and that takes care of that.
You mean that we spend all this time approving a handbook?
Yeah.
And then we don't buy, buy it? Why are we wasting everybody's time approving this and going over and over and over?
Okay, we'll, we'll discuss the handbook later on in the agenda here, so...
I have another question.
Yes.
I would like to know, it's been kept kind of quiet here, about this federal investigation. Is it still ongoing? Because it says it's still pending. And has the board members been briefed on all information pertaining to it? Because I feel taxpayers should know what is going on. And I feel that the board is, they're the ones that voted in, they're the ones that do, take care of all this legal stuff here with the minutes and everything else, but... Why wouldn't me be given the information if all the voters voted them in to oversee all of this?
Well, I can answer a couple of those questions. Excuse me. This board, um, adjourned into executive session on a conference call some months ago for this very reason, to talk about the status, uh, of, of the OCI report. Your answer, you know, your question, is there anything new? Is there anything that has been updated? Is there any additional information? We have not gotten a response from OCI. I can tell you that this is a, that this is obviously a, a, a federal organization, and the wheels turn slowly. Truthfully, Mr. Sawtell, I'm just as frustrated as you are not to get a response. Because we've all been waiting now since June, 'cause that, that complaint was filed in June, this is now January, so we're going on seven months.
Right.
And if we had further information from OCI, a decision, if they were asking for any more information, then I'm obligated to share that with my board, and I would.
Well, yeah, but my second part of my question is...
Okay.
Do all the board members have all the information pertaining to the investigation?
As I, as I have stated publicly, we provided the information that was requested to us. That included, for example, minutes from board meetings, records from special education office. Some of those records are confidential. The public ones coming from the board meeting, board members were here, they, they, they are aware of those things. And if I've, and if I've got a board member, a new board member, Joanne, if you want additional information, we can have another conference call with our legal services. I'm not opposed to that at all. But at this time, we simply haven't gotten a response back from the original response that we sent during the summer. And it has been seven months, and it has been a lengthy time period. And truthfully, I'm just as frustrated as all of you, 'cause I'd like to have the answer.
Well, so are I.
Yeah.
And I'd also like to know how much, uh, illegal expenses this is costing for it.
This particular issue, I gave that information to the board the last time we discussed it, and we have not incurred any additional expenses since then.
And what was the number?
I can't remember off the top of my head, but I can get it.
Sean?
So, um, my question would be, if it's been seven months, we have some new board members here? Are they up to speed on what's going on? Have they, do they know anything about what's going on? I think longer...
I know some, but not all.
I don't, I don't know, as many of the board members have been on for much more than that. My question would be, are they up to speed?
Hasn't been updated on it?
I'm the only one.
So, the zone, your own one?
And actually, I'd rather not know.
I know. Thank you.
Sometimes you're better off not knowing.
And at this time, there has been no change, there's been no update, there's been no advance on anything.
We do know that the two charges, we've seen, if you look that up on Facebook, with disability and retaliation is what they're addressing.
Now, hasn't that been, something's been brought up many times about retaliation? I think that's been brought up so many times at different board members, you know, board meetings and stuff, and everybody would just all... I'd like to hear one case. I'd like to hear just one thing. And then when someone comes up with something, well, they don't wanna hear that one, let's hear a different one. You come up with a different one, they don't wanna hear that one, you know?
Well, this...
To me, I don't think it's much of a joke.
Yeah.
I take it quite seriously. And, uh, it should be taken seriously.
I think we all take it serious too, Tracy, but there's a process that we're following too.
Right.
And, you know, I, I like to know, uh, be updated, but, you know, we talked to the lawyer, and at that point, they gave us what they could, and like Mr. Johnson said, nothing else.
And I just would like to make sure that the board isn't left in the dark on anything.
We are not.
I can give you my opinion on it. Um, if it's been seven months, I really don't think that they are treating it as, um, as important as people are thinking that it is.
Right, some cases takes two years.
I mean, I, I don't... If there was something really, really wrong, they would be here.
Sean?
Uh, I'm just curious about if, if a teacher or someone, a member, faculty member of the school, if their performance isn't up to standard, can we, is there something we, can we get rid of that person? If it's constantly, if there's a problem with someone and their, their performance isn't there... I'm not saying any names, I'm, I'm just asking the question. Is, is there a performance-based thing, or is the contract mean, that's a contract and doesn't add up?
So, I can, I, I can answer that question. There is, and I'll, I'll be speaking about the process, I'm not gonna single anybody out by name, name, either, but I will speak what the process is. Is there, is there a way essentially, you know, to terminate somebody's employment? Well, the answer is yes, there is a way. In the law, there's a phrase that all superintendents, uh, are trained on, and, and the phrase is unfit and unprofitable. That's actually a quote from the law. So, in order to terminate a teacher, for example, the burden would be on the school department or the board to prove that a given teacher is unfit and unprofitable. The training that I have, that is a very high legal standard, unfit and unprofitable. So, that is a very high legal challenge to meet. However, when you say get rid of somebody, there's a difference between termination, non-renewal, contract expiration in some cases, and the process differs in each one. In the case of a probationary teacher, they have to be renewed annually, there's no expectation of continued employment. Uh, and in, in a situation like that, you could see a non-renewal. In the case of an administrator with a multi-year contract, unless something happens to rise to the level of unfit and unprofitable, you could be waiting simply for the contract to expire. Uh, and that wouldn't be considered a termination as the law defines it. So, Sean, the answer to your question is yes, and it varies between a teacher and whether or not it's a probationary teacher, in the case of an administrator, whether or not somebody has a multi-year contract. So, there is a process, it is defined in the law, and it is slightly different depending upon what category a person falls into.
Thank you.
Okay, any further public discussion? Okay. To consider approval of the January 2nd, 2020 school committee meeting minutes as written with all corrections as recommended by superintendent.
Is that a motion to be accepted?
Yeah, leave a motion to accept it as written. And a second motion?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Uh, well, I, I'd like to ask Melissa, um... When we talked last week, Melissa, or the week, well, it's been a while now, about the outing club, and that stipend was $1,200, and you said that two people get paid for that. Who, who's the other person with you, Kathy and Kathy? So, you each get $600?
Yes.
Well, point of, point of clarification, because this came up briefly at the last meeting. And I asked my office to pull payroll records from last year. Last year, the only person who was paid by the school department was Kathy Morse. So, once we paid a person, in this case, it was Kathy Morse, conceivably Kathy can do with that money whatever she wants. And we have not paid anybody out this year for it because the assignment has yet to be completed. So, in, if you go back one, two years, which would have been before Melissa got on the board, she did receive some money from that stipend directly from the school department, but at that time, she was not a board member. So, as you all know, a board member can't be an employee. So, that would be, you know, that, that, that just simply isn't allowed, and that's a, that's a black and white thing in the law.
Yeah.
So, last year, we paid Kathy Morse directly, and the year before that, Melissa wasn't on the board.
Yeah, I just wondered if you, if you had another... I knew Melissa, you know, helped with this program, but I didn't know if you had somebody else that helped you also, Kathy?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, motion on the floor, any further discussion on the exceptions in the minutes? All in favor? Principals report.
So, the steam trap has been replaced in the gymnasium. The floor is appearing to be quite a bit drier. I did contact Roy. He's waiting a little bit to see if the floor is gonna settle once the moisture starts to go up, and then we'll go from there. The MLTI, which is the Main Laptop Initiative, Kathy has been chosen to be on the advisory board. This now gives us a voice in, in Washington County, with hopefully some more input for our small schools. For professional development, teachers involved in math, we did a two-hour interactive webinar with Melanie Alton-Bright. This is for our new math program. Um, a lot of pieces on technology, helping teachers find their way through that, um, because the kids also have access to it online, um, so that was a wonderful two hours. Uh, yesterday, I was in a meeting for the Washington County Leadership Team. As you know, we plan all professional development that happens for all teachers in Washington County. Next week, we'll start our start testing. This will be, all students will be tested, this is a mid-year test, they're tested three times a day. Excuse me, a year, thank you, three times a day would be way too much. Um, Larry Jones, Michelle Mitchell, and myself are doing early mathematics diagnostic interview. This is, um, of course, that's in-person and online opportunity partner of education. It's a screening tool, we have pretty good screening tools in reading, but we were lacking in math, so this will give us another piece. So, at the beginning of the year, you're screening all kids. So, if it's a third grader, you'll screen them at the end of the year, second grade tool, to see where they are, to see if they need some additional help with Title I, um, that type of support. Pleased to announce that Mr. Johnson sent to me a snapshot from the state of our MEA scores. So, I've broken it down into two parts, academic progress and academic achievement. In English Language Arts, we are excelling in both areas. And in math, we are meeting the standards under academic progress, and we are excelling the standards in academic achievement. Um, I don't know, Mr. Johnson, has that opened to the public, a vacant access online yet?
There was...
I just got a notice that something had happened.
Right, and for, for... For those who would try to access the report online, uh, there would, there's some type of, there's some type of glitch or holdup at the State Department, so those aren't available to the public yet. Uh, but I didn't feel bad about passing along the good news, because your students scored highly, uh, here in Lubbock this past year, uh, and that's what, that's what Tina is referring to. But if anybody here is trying to access additional data online, just simply understand that there will be a delay of some time as the state works out the kinks.
I believe, excuse me, I believe the kink was, um, they had not, uh, properly protected...
Right.
Small classes, kids with like five or six, so it would be easy to figure out in Lubbock, grade whatever, okay, there's X amount of kids, oh, probably this one. So, that's what they're protecting, is student identity on that piece. So, these scores are comparing our school to the rest of the state. Correct?
That's great.
Correct. Um, on February 13th, we're gonna try something new. Um, we started planning this last year. Last year, we did a bulletin board that recognized all students for high honors, honors, perfect attendance, and behavior. This year, we're gonna step it up a little bit and do an award celebration, where we will honor high honors, honors, perfect attendance, behavior. We're gonna bring sports into that, do volleyball, soccer, cross-country, and our travel team's basketball.
Nice.
Um, the details aren't worked out, the awards are in, getting ready to be ordered, and we're, we'll, hopefully, we'll be there by the 13th. The last thing in my report is, um, God love our school nurse, she is writing a grant for us. Um, it's gonna be Health and Acadia piece, which I brought pieces here. The board wanted a little bit of information to read. Um, the one main piece of all this is, it's up to $10,000. It, uh, worked on substance abuse. The two pieces that she wants to bring here, one is an outdoor school, and this is something that's happening in Millbridge. There'll be some sort of a presentation class or something. I'm not familiar with that myself. And then the second piece will bring in some of the tree things that we've been doing with Brittany Gray. Uh, the total amount, it could be up to $10,000. The total amount that she's asking for is six. But the little stipulation with the grant is, is that we have to pay upfront and then they reimburse. So, I am bringing that to the board to see how you want to proceed, if you want to proceed, if we even get it. Um, I believe unfortunately, the deadline is tomorrow. She just got this email, maybe a week, $100.
Isn't that convenient?
So, if you're interested, I did bring the proposal for Mr. Johnson to sign. If you're not...
So, explain how this upfront money is used?
So, her plan is to bring, um, outdoor school here to Lubbock. They'll work with various teachers on the content areas within the outdoor setting. And then the other piece is to bring in some of the things that Brittany Ray is teaching us with the tree program, which is a part of, um, piece for children.
So, they're asking for us to fund, how much in advance of the...
It'll be monthly, so it will depend. The total amount that she is applying for is $6,000. So, if it's a, a monthly reimbursement rate, which she told me, if it's $500 for the month, that's what we'll pay, and then they'll reimburse it.
So, this is a grant that will come to us, it's not gonna just disappear and we're not gonna get it?
Correct, and it can be renewable.
And the teachers that are involved in this?
Um, right now, teachers who have expressed interest, um, of course, myself, Mr. Ashby, uh, Mr. Jones, and Mrs. McPhail. Uh, there was conversation in the hallway with a new teacher, but I'm not quite sure how that finished, Mrs. Morse. Mrs. Street is not with us, so I'm not quite sure with her, and I haven't had a chance to talk with Mrs. Muffin, but at least five or six on the set.
I think it's a better hit.
I do too, I mean, you must have some money in that little, uh, honey pot here, Mr. Johnson.
The, 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 the $10,000 figure, no, we didn't budget for this activity, but I think, I'm confident we could find it some way. To me, it sounds like a great opportunity, and it's not unusual for a grant to have a quick turnaround. Granted, yes, it is a little inconvenient, but, I mean, that, that process, many times, has a, has a short timeframe to get the application in. It, you know, I, I think it's a great idea, you know, I'm just looking for the board, the board's approval.
And did you make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion on that.
One second.
I think it's a good idea, it sounds like a good plan, and something that we all care of in schools. Uh, any further discussions? All in favor?
Thank you.
If you know Tina on this side, Brittany, has she still made any plans to come down? I know it's been busy and we've been...
She has been here with us, with us or with the board?
With the board, she was gonna come.
Illness in the family, and she slipped out and got a concussion. So, we have met with her in January, we have her scheduled for February, and we have her scheduled for March, and I'm in conversation with her about coming to do, if that is what the board wishes, a presentation. We just put this on there to do what?
Is there anything, uh, person can check?
Yes.
Read both of us outside classroom?
Excuse me?
Is there anything that a person can read, what you'd look at, both the outside classroom?
I've called Health and Acadia.
You do a copy of, um...
I have a copy.
Thank you.
I'm excited about it.
Not excited about it, yeah.
Okay, anyone from the school board have anything?
I do.
Yes?
Um, I just wanted to update the board about the conversation that I had with Frances Presley, who, um, we voted last time, that's how it was a facilitator. Ari just said that there's more information that I will talk with her tomorrow about, but, um... He, I, um, I printed out what he sent me, and I left it on the counter tonight. But basically, he's, um, saying that his fee went from $1,500 to $1,400 for us, and that, um, we tentatively set next, the, the first meeting in February, our first board, school board meeting in February, as the date, that he would come with the second board meeting in February as a snow date.
Anyone else on the school board have anything? Superintendent's report.
Yeah, it's just a quick update. Uh, at this time of the year, I'm trucking around...
At this time of the year, I'm trucking around the audit, the other school districts, but yours came in, one of the earlier ones, if not the first one, so I've already shared your audit results with you tonight. Just to remind the group, subsidy is planning on being released next month, February, February right around the corner, but that is the month we receive subsidy. And also, I would share that just a few days ago, I received a courtesy copy from the Commissioner's office on the commission, the broad strokes of the Commissioner's budget that she submitted to the State Board of Education. A couple of the features that were included in that would be additional money for minimum receivers, which would include us, and also additional money to help offset special education costs. And our special education cost is certainly a significant part of our budget. So any increase in funding in those two areas benefits us. So that really got my attention. Now, that's the Commissioner's proposed budget, and that's entering into the legislative session that will be a biennial budget, so this is by far the more important budgetary round at the state level. But that's moving on the horizon, and there'll be a lot of competition for those dollars. So I've seen like a summary, the broad strokes of, of the Commissioner's proposal, what elements she wanted to support with funding, and I think she's on the right track. But there's gonna be a lot of water over the falls between now and state approval of a budget toward June. But subsidy traditionally comes along in February, so we will begin the budgetary process in earnest with that information in hand. With that, that's, that's all I had in my report for the evening.
Okay, before we go on, you had something-
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I've been reminded, I need to appoint Martina Wallace as the Peewee cheer and coach. Sorry, Martina, if you're, if you're here or listening, I don't, I don't see you're here, but.
And you had something to share from the athletic director?
Do you want that now, or when it comes on the handbook and stuff?
Well, we can go to the handbook then.
Adjustments to the agenda. I do have one. If it pleases the board, I'd like a brief executive session for a personnel matter. We can just tack it on to the end. I don't anticipate that taking any great length of time. But if we could make that just number seven, I guess.
Why don't we make that number six?
Okay.
Number six to number seven?
Okay.
Because that might take a little bit longer. That's from the first personnel matter.
Personnel matter, that's correct.
Okay. Any old business? New business, to consider disposing of music equipment. Do we have a list in-
So there has been nothing found, so I think perhaps we ought to put this to rest at this point?
Nothing found, okay. So, so since there's nothing found, I motion that we basically just give this off the docket for now. And put it on the agenda if it comes down the road, some future date. Number two, discuss, consider discussion on the athletic handbook. Now, a couple of weeks ago, we kind of put this off and put it to this meeting here, it was actually supposed to be last week's meeting, but on the adjustments that were requested in the athletic handbook, and has there anything been done on that?
Well, there's some, we have the 2018, 2019, the athletic handbook, and that's the one that we worked on, I'm gonna say in 2017 or '18.
Two years ago, yeah.
And basically, this handbook, I think, and I've looked at two other schools, and I think that our handbook covers, I think that it covers everything adequately. I just, one thing that I, I feel that we need to do is, I know that recently, there's been something come out about a Campaballo student, and the Campaballo student, I think she got off, left the team, but we don't have anything in here. You know, what's the rules for Canadians, for the Campaballo students? Is it the same, Tina, or?
Yes.
Okay. I think we need to put that in there somewhere, and they have to sign and do, do everything.
Well, just like our students, they acknowledge that the handbook and the rules, and they sign it, and something like that. So maybe we should actually have something in there that actually mentions students from other schools, whether it be from Campaballo. I believe we did have a girl playing from Perry.
From Perry?
Yeah, we did have someone on, on the travel team-
Yes.
From Perry. So if they're from any other school districts, they have to be given a handbook that acknowledges the rules and acknowledges that they've accepted and read the handbook.
Yeah, which they do.
Just like our students.
Yeah, they do know.
So, but I think it has, it should be in the handbook itself.
Yeah, one thing with the handbook, I, I think we just need to follow the handbook. A lot of the issues that have evolved is because we're not following what the handbook says, and changes are being made. You know, the grades, it says about kids, you know, grading up or coming down, just so we can have these teams. And I, I think the easiest thing we can do is just to follow this, just follow what our handbook says. And I know we have gone over this for three or four years now, and basically, that's what we should be doing. I, I wanted to ask Debbie, too, Tina, I didn't know if she'd be here tonight or not, but there was some parents on Campaballo, and an issue came up, and I talked to those parents, but I told them they had to follow chain of command. But Debbie had said about giving these parents some paperwork, and I wasn't familiar with what kind of paperwork she would be giving.
They asked her what the paperwork was, and she refused to tell them.
I, I just don't know what it would be.
Want to just add it?
But I would like to say that I did refer them to the chain of command with this, and everything else, I mean, you know, I don't know, Joanne, you probably haven't seen it, have you?
I, I don't have a copy of the handbook.
No. If we can get a copy, and, I mean, we've spent, and Tina, Tina, Terry, Anna, Sean, Stephanie, I mean, we've put a lot of hours into this, and I, I think it's pretty adequate. I think what we need to do is-
So let me hold off a minute, because you had something from the athletic director regarding this, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And we're gonna enter this in as a public document in this meeting. So this document is being shared with the board here. We'll be entering it in minutes and so on.
One thing we have is $19,000, which I didn't know it was that much, that this town puts into our athletic program. That's a lot of money for the amount of kids that we have. And luckily, you know, there's a good variety for these kids that they get to play, but they, there are other things that our kids can do, but they're all sports oriented. And I feel if our town is willing to pay that much for our kids to have the sports program, then we need to let them play whatever they want to play, and whatever our, our athletic handbook is, dictates that.
Okay, Tina, can you read this for us a little? So, share with the public here?
I, I will say before Tina starts that last week, the beginning of last week, I think Debbie and I had very good conversations about our sports program, and there were things that I wasn't aware of, and, but I wasn't aware that our kids had sixty games. She said that, but anyway, I'd like Tina to read that.
Ari informed me that she and Wander were concerned about the grades listing for sports, for example, three through six Peewee and six through eight junior high. I agree. I also have a good feeling. I would like to see a side note added to this section, saying based on enrollment and interest. Our numbers fluctuate year to year. Some years, we will need to drop down, and some years, we only may have enough room on the teams for a couple of grades if they are extremely large. Their second concern was under the miscellaneous team policy. All rules, regulations, and policies are subject to change with notice by the athletic director and principal is approved by the school committee. They would like it to be approved by the school, by the board before making any changes. I disagree strongly with changing that. The athletic director is the administrator for the sports program and should be able to make changes in certain circumstances when needed. The athletic director has been hired by the school to make these decisions. It is not the board's job to make these decisions. I agree that the principal, superintendent, and board should be notified of changes, but I do not believe that they need to approve any changes. This is what you hire an athletic director for. The board should not be micromanaging the athletic administrator's decisions. The largest problem is that we are playing in two different leagues at the same time. This is why we have many athletic issues. We do not have enough athletes to field two teams at once, not to mention gym usage and buses. I would like to see a separate season for the junior high basketball team and the Peewee team next year. This does mean that there will be only one junior high team with only Lubeck students participating, and one Peewee season that follows the junior high season. Sixth graders should not be playing on two separate teams at the same time. It is too much. They would, would be playing four games a week. When does that allow for skill building during practice? When would they study or complete their homework? Most nights, the players are not getting home until eight, between eight and nine-thirty at night. What about rest? What about family time? I have spoken to local doctors, and they report that they have seen an increase in ankle, knee, and shoulder issues due to overuption and not enough rest. There should be an equal balance between all things. I made an administrative decision after talking to my principal, superintendent, coaches, doctors, and parents, that the sixth grade students will not play on both teams. I also made the decision that sixth grade students are required to play on the junior high team. Without the sixth grade on the junior high team, we would not have the numbers to field this team. My goal is to get as many students involved in sports as possible. This decision gives a larger number of students the opportunity to be involved in the Lubeck athletic program.
Public comment, no. Or comment?
Well, I don't agree with a lot of this. You know, ball's been played this long, and I'll ask Sean, because he's been in our team and active in it, how many years have Lubeck always played Peewee and junior high? And, I mean, you know as well as anybody does, Sean.
I played as a coach, but at, at some level for ten years, and for nine of them, we took down to make a team, period. Just like Diane did, just like I did when I was the A D, just like all the other schools did. I'm just gonna throw this out as an example. Last year, we played Edmunds. They had third graders on the junior high team. They'd done whatever they could to make a team. Right now, we have four kids for our Peewee team. So what do you tell them? We're not, you're not gonna have a team this year? Or do you take up the sixth graders and take down to make a team? So they can play?
Debbie hasn't showed us that we have enough players to play. She has said there is enough players to field all, all four teams.
Well, Russell's telling me that he has four girls come into practice.
I'm hearing it directly from the athletic director.
I, myself, I just feel we need to follow the athletic handbook, because Lubeck always had-
It's white and black and white, there's no gray area, it's black and white.
Why are we going through all of this and approving a handbook if we're not, I, it doesn't make sense to me. Throw it out the window, then, and say we're gonna do whatever we want, whenever we want. Why are we wasting all this time? I don't understand. Countless meetings and countless people and groups and meetings and groups and votes and, to approve a handbook that you're saying we're not gonna follow? I don't understand. It, it just blows my mind.
And some of these decisions, I think that's why we need this miscellaneous team policy on page seven, number eight, is because I, I feel that we should be involved. Sean's right, we've gone through this year after year, and I don't see why, when it's here. Why can't we just follow? Parents, if parents used to say, I, you know, if my kid wants to play Peewee and junior high, do they have any options here? Are parents allowed? I mean, our town is putting a lot of money into our program so our kids can have, and it's a learning experience for our kids, it's a growing year for our kids.
I believe you explained that last year in terms of, is it the school function, Mr. Johnson?
I did. And what, what Tina is referring to is that parental input on a variety of topics happens every school, every day. The board has a responsibility to essentially maintain a reasonable level of safety because there's risk in any sport. So what, when a parent signs the Athletico, they're essentially, they're essentially accepting that if my child plays basketball, there's a reasonable chance they're gonna sprain their ankle, so I therefore give permission for my son or daughter to participate and acknowledge the rules in the handbook, and that, that's pretty much it. As a, what Tina was referring to earlier, you can't, you can't give up your responsibilities for those matters. You can allow as much input as you want, but when it comes right down to where does the authority rest? The authority rests with you, because these are school-sponsored functions, school-sponsored events. So if you had all, if you've got seventy-five kids in your school, and all one hundred and fifty parents were sitting right here, right now, tonight, and said, we think it's great to do, to take some action, if something bad happens during that action, you're still responsible, even if they gave permission. So to give a more commonplace example, if a parent says, I want my kid to play as much as possible, and I don't care if it's thirty games or fifty games, if the child develops a medical condition, they can still essentially sue you for lack of, lack of supervision, irresponsible decision-making, whatever, regardless of whether or not they gave permission, because the authority rests with you. Now, that's an extreme example, and the point is, this board has the authority given to it by the law. You are the elected representatives of your town. I can, I can see that you value parental input, and that's great. Ultimately, they're gonna, ultimately, this board's gonna make a decision. My only advice to this board is that you cannot shed your responsibility. A parent can give permission for a lot of things, but you bear the responsibility for the program. If you understand that, okay.
All I know is, a lot of parents want their kids to be actively involved in all of our sports programs.
I think Debbie's done a good job on making sure that we have enough players for all those teams.
We always have in the past. Now, our kids are gonna play, they're gonna go play anywhere where there's, they're gonna be up against third to sixth graders. So already, that's putting something inside our, they're, they're losing their confidence right there, because they're gonna be playing sixth graders in all their, it's a, it's not a good win-win situation, even in giving them confidence, it just isn't. I'd say, let's follow this the way that it's written.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion. I'll second it.
Any further discussion on that?
So let me, let me make sure I got the motion for a minute. Follow, follow the handbook as written? Is that, is that, is that a representation of the motion?
Yeah. It needs to be brought to the school board for approval, as it states, and, yeah, it needs to follow.
Okay, motion, motion by Ari?
I wonder.
Excuse me, Wander, I'm sorry.
Can I, okay.
All right.
Any further discussion on the motion?
I just have a question. So the handbook right now says that any change has to come before us?
Any changes in the handbook?
Small or large?
Language or parts taken in or taken out have to come before the word?
I would like to say, I don't know if you have a copy of this, or what, you know, it's the eighteen, nineteen, or I know Joanne, I mean, I'd like for them, I guess, to be able to have a, a chance to read this.
Yeah, we can, just tell them to send out a copy to the other board member. So we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion on that motion? And could you read the motion one more time, Chris?
Motion as I have, to follow the handbook as written with any changes requiring board approval. Is that accurate of our intent?
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? I agree to. Thank you. Okay, so, to discuss, continue, consider discussion on Peewee, basketball season, and eligibility.
Okay.
I mean, have we really touched upon this yet?
Well, we have with this. All we gotta do is follow, that's all we gotta do, is follow this? That's all we have to do, is follow this. I didn't understand, and I can't ask Debbie, but why kids have to sign a contract?
It's just, it's just the back page of the handbook, that's just saying that they write-
Does every kid, every kid at the beginning of the year?
I don't know what would happen at the beginning of the year, but she's making sure that that is happening. It's not a contract, it's that-
It's not a contract, it's that, that page of that, just saying that they write that so far.
Another thing with this whole thing, too, is we need to, in September, have this ready, uh, review it, have the physicals ready, the kids, you know, for parents to know.
My understanding, that whole packet went home in September, is that correct?
Yes, the physicals.
Because I remember seeing one, I remember signing the back date and sending it in.
Yeah.
So...
But there, uh, when it started with the always team, they still had a hostile, you know, for...
Sports physicals were offered on the nineteenth of September.
Yeah.
I think it should be sent out in the middle of August. Gives, you know, a couple weeks to be prepared.
Well, everybody's working, Noreen has her vacation time that she takes.
Well, that's when I get my boys over to get there, this is the one in August.
Uh, the physicals were based on what the, the medical center could schedule.
Right, but don't say everybody.
Okay, okay. So, on this, um, do we need a motion on this? Follow the handbook?
No, I, I mean, I think we talked about it, and I know that we've talked about this for years, but I just feel that we need to follow it the way it is written, to give our kids, now, I know if our kids go and play, just like I said, you say, tell them, well, you're gonna play sixth graders, but you're not gonna have any on your team, and that's a good thing to be brought up. They told one sixth grader that if, when he moved over here, he'd be able to play, then when he got over here, he couldn't play. I mean, I don't know why these types of things happen.
So, the motion on this would be, to follow the handbook?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I add something? No?
One more, please. A second on that motion? Okay. Any further discussion for the board? You have a comment?
Thank you. I just want to say, you know, in, just talking to Melissa, why have a handbook if you can just change it? I mean, if, what I'm saying is, it was, and we just voted on it, and I'm glad you did, to, to approve changes, it only makes perfect sense. If you gotta approve that the...
We just, we just voted on that in the priority of the question.
Right. If the board approves the whole handbook, they should also approve the changes, right? I mean, it would only make perfect sense.
Okay, so, on the motion, uh, to discussion to Pee-wee, basketball season eligibility, just to follow the handbook? All in favor? All opposed?
Um, and I would like to say, which we didn't go over, we have a new one, too, uh, two thousand nineteen to, uh, twenty twenty, but we didn't go over that one. This is one that Tina had made already to, you know, when we first started doing this back in November.
Well, that's why I was giving to you, because...
Yeah.
We had some changes that were proposed, and we wanted to find out if those changes were, were new, so...
Well, they, they actually weren't in this one, but...
Okay, so, that's what we found out. Okay. To consider discussion on the changes of the LCOC lease, so, and this is just a discussion, there's really nothing to vote on right now. Um, Wanda and I did have a discussion with Mr. Doyle, thanks for being here. Uh, we went over a whole bunch of things as far as, uh, lease terminology, and what their goals were, and what was gonna happen, and what we're looking to go forward for in the public. So, um, there's still some information, I'm waiting to come back, uh, to actually give the board the changes on what's, what we're looking at, something like that, and I hope to have that in the next meeting. So, um, basically, it comes down to, they're looking to, uh, change some lease language in there so they can obtain insurance of their own for that building, to ensure the contents of the building, and so on like that, while we're still insured the building itself, okay? And I'm sure that the, um, the insurance company, the same insurance company, which is what? Living Brooks?
Yes.
Okay, so, there would be no double indemnity, if there was a problem with, with a claim and so on like that, so, so, as soon as I have the information, I'm waiting for it from legal to get back, um, we'll be sharing that information with the board. I hope to have it by today, but that didn't happen, so, um, so, basically, I'm gonna mo, motion to table this till the next meeting, and then I can actually present the lease changes and what we discussed and so on like that, for that. So, I'm looking at a motion on that to table that. Have a second on that motion?
Second.
All in favor of the motion is, to table this? For, 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 any, any against? Okay.
Mark it.
Okay, and the next one is, uh, number five, to consider adoption of policy JKF disciplinary removal of students with disabilities and JKF dash R disciplinary removal of students with disabilities administration procedure. Now, there were some questions that Wanda had, have you cleared those questions up?
Yeah, one thing that, um, I, I mean, I'm ready to, you know, I, I hope we can make motion to approve this, but I had wanted to talk to, uh, I did talk to Beth Cushing, and, um, you know, I wanted to talk to her a little bit about this, and she said, uh, referred me actually to Ms. Cox, and I talked to Ms. Cox yesterday, and probably sometime Monday or Tuesday of next week, I'll try to get down, but I think, you know, Ms. Cox will be able to answer any questions that I had.
Okay.
But I, I'd make a motion to approve the, uh, this policy.
Okay, a second on that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have a couple of things. One is, um, JKFR under B. My question is just, is there any effort to keep a student educationally up to date during ten-day suspensions? It seems like it's a sort of self-fulfilling prophecy to not have some education going on.
The, the work can be sent home, and, and usually is in, in most cases, so, the opportunity is there, work can be sent home, the parents can shuttle work back in, teachers can grade it, uh, so, the, the answer is yes.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to go into executive session for a personnel issue, and this will be under, uh, pursuant statutory MRSS four oh five, paragraph E, to discuss a personnel issue. Have a second on that motion?